Right this meeting to order please.
The United States of America and the public for which stands our nation under God and universal liberty and justice for all.
Please guide us as we make wise and form decisions for the good of the borough and residents. Also keep our military and first responders safe.
We had a street committee meeting tonight. Here's the building. Discuss some few issues, by the way, really issues on some informa and some other stuff. So that'll be brought up at the street committee agenda.
Okay, the minutes. I have a motion to accept the minutes, please. We're up. Second. Dave, any discussion?
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I did want to ask in the resignation of Mr. Dibble, I voted with regret and I wonder if that could be moved in there.
The only thing I want to add, the minutes did read, Cobal referenced a letter from Keegan Wright, which was not turned over to the borough. Once again, Keegan texted me a message and it was a photo he had taken of his handwritten note on a piece of paper, so I dated it for today and the message come in on six nine, but here, the borough can have a copy of it.
I thought you said you had a letter. I didn't realize it was on your wall.
No, but here's a copy of it.
That's fine.
So, I mean, if you want to...
I thought if Dave happened to deal with the issue, it would be helpful if, here, Joy, I'll put it just down there. I thought you said you had a letter though.
Yeah, I might have misspoke, but I just, reading the minutes, I thought, you know, I have nothing to hide.
No, that's fine.
Do I have the copy of the document?
There's no more discussion on the minutes? Let's have a roll call, please.
Williams, oh, yes. So, Trusten.
Hi.
Neely.
Hi.
Watkins.
Hi.
Cobal.
No.
Jennings.
Okay, bill done. Okay, I have a motion to accept them, please. Some move. Need a second? Joy. Discussion. Walter.
Cobal.
Hi.
Williams. Hi. Neely.
Hi.
Jennings.
Hi.
Watkins. Hi. Trusten.
Hi.
Okay, visitor, please give your name, your address, organization, which you represent, and subject. Limit to three minutes, please. Who would like to go first? Mr. Wood.
Walter Witscan Township. I have a question for the mayor. How many full-time police officers do we currently have?
If you would, Walter, this is your three minutes to speak. At the end of that, you can answer questions or whatever, but I don't want to cut into your topic.
Okay. I'll answer it. I don't think we have any, correct?
Actually, we have, we have one full-time, three part-time.
Who's the full-time?
Chief Sealy.
Okay, so he's working forty hours a week currently? I know he was working thirty previously.
He's salaried, so...
Yeah, but, I mean, full-time as in forty hours.
And so, we...
And do you believe that he's capable of doing the job to the full extent that would be required of an officer? Okay. And my next question for you is, so, Neely had asked you if Austin Dibble had given a reason why he resigned. You were honest, he didn't give a reason, but you kind of left out that you guys forced him out? And part of forcing him out was that you wouldn't load up his personnel file with a bunch of stuff so that he wouldn't get a job anywhere, wouldn't be able to get a job anywhere else as a police officer? Is that correct?
Okay, these are, I don't know if we're allowed to answer them.
Okay.
We'd have to talk to a labor attorney, you know, to find out what we're allowed to say.
Okay. So, that seems like what was, well, that seems like what had possibly happened, that you forced him out. And then you guys sent him a bill for leaving early after forcing him out? And then, when he went to another location to apply for a job, they called the borough for reference? And the borough tried convincing that station not to hire him? Even though you guys had said, "Leave and we won't try ruining your life"?
I'm not quite sure where you're getting your information.
So, none of that's accurate?
None of that will be answered.
Okay. You're not allowed to answer whether or not that's accurate?
Is that coming from you people or is that coming from Mr. Brand, your attorney that sits here at the table?
We actually have a labor attorney, and that would come from him, and this is just an area that we can't go down, correct, David?
That's my understanding, yes.
Have you had exit interviews with any of the officers so far to find out why they didn't want to be here?
An offer was made, he has not reached out.
Well, you, you also lost Clint, I mean, he's part-time, but you lost him as full-time. You've lost Lacy as full-time as well. It kind of seems like a pattern over a decade.
Okay, Walter, you, um...
Yep.
Would you like to keep going right here? Do you have a lot of points to improve?
Yep. I, I just want to point out the Sunshine Act violation of not posting twenty-four hours in advance on the Facebook page. It's the webpage. I mean, there's no argument why it shouldn't be put on there, under my opinion.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I thought the borough was represented by our solicitor. Do we have separate attorneys for different...
We do. For labor. We do have a labor attorney, yes, that specializes in labor issues. Just like we do, we have a telecommunications attorney that we've dealt with when it comes to dealing with the need, because that's a specialty of the law, and that's fine. I, yeah, I think generally speaking, I would think that as far as Austin Dibble's concerned, those would be personnel issues that would not be something that could be discussed at the general...
Unless Austin said you could, right?
Okay. So, if, Mr. Brand, you have to go through the labor attorney or does council have, you know, I don't even know who this individual is, is a local attorney or you can't tell us who he is?
No. I think his name is David Mitchell. I've dealt with him before.
Council can't deal with attorneys on their own. Council has to do that as a group. It's typically me that speaks with the labor attorney as I am the borough manager.
Well, you work for the borough council.
Correct, but I'm the employee, council is not.
And then, you just have council and then you have no information.
All right, thank you.
You want to speak, you can speak when you stand up, John. Please do, thank you. Next visitor, please. Okay, Dave.
If there's nobody else.
Nobody else, you got the floor.
I'm glad to remove myself from the table, because this is me as a resident of Canton Borough. I may? Thank you for granting me the use of your time. Since I tend to talk too much, I've written out and will be reading my comments this evening in order to stay within my allotted three minutes. Thank you to all of council members for your time you spend on borough matters. Thank you to the borough residents who come to learn and better understand what the council does. And thank you to all the borough employees for carrying out the policies and procedures voted on and passed by Canton Borough Councils past and present. Since this time allotted to me by council is for comments and not for questions, any questions I might pose here are for the listeners to ponder, reflect on. I would be glad to listen to any replies on my own time if you wish. I'll be speaking about information, sources of information, accuracy of information, effect of incomplete or irrelevant information, purposely misleading information, hearsay information, gossip, rumors, innuendo. We all depend on information to make decisions every day. You and I might make different decisions based on the very same information, or we might make the same decision for different reasons. If we use the same, accurate, complete information in our life experiences, then individual priorities take over as they should. But if I only get information from inaccurate or purposely skewed in sources, the decisions I make or the opinions I might hold are inherently flawed. I would need to change my habits. I don't, I don't rely on any single source of information when I form opinions, and I hope no one here does either. I listen to opposing interpretations of facts, which I do my best to verify before I call them facts, and then I try to find the truth, which is often and maybe even usually somewhere in the middle. I don't consider social media sites to be unbiased, much less completely accurate. Often politically, political social media sites are designed to get attention or clicks, not to honestly inform followers. If I have a question or need information, I try to go to the source. I don't beg on Facebook or Instagram or X. I find out who should have the answer and ask them. I either call them or go to them. I find I get much more accurate and timely information when I don't play whisper down the river. A conversation with an original source gets me more timely, more accurate, and more complete answers. I recommend it highly. I hope that as we all go through our day-to-day lives, we consider this approach to forming opinions and on choosing the information sources on which we base these opinions. Thank you for sharing your time with me.
Anybody else?
I thought you resigned after that.
Okay. Number six committees?
Mike will handle that with the next committee.
Okay, number seven, business reg managers report.
You have all of the financial reports to, for all funds through the end of June in your packets, as well as your first quarter budget report. If you have any questions, you can let me know. There's also a resuming report through the end of June and a resumé report through the end of June.
Amy, I have a question on that right to know report. So, the Office of Open Records does say, if you don't have a records management policy, create one. So, do we have a records management policy currently?
I don't know what you mean by records management. They follow the, as far as like disposing of records and stuff?
Well, if you go to the PSA, not the PSA, okay, so if you go on there, there is a sample policy on the website, and it's, it's easily edited, you can just add Canton Borough wherever, several pages. But just to help put everyone on the same page, I mean, there are policies there and if you want to...
On the OOR website?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it for next one.
Yeah, if you could, and maybe we could talk about drafting that policy for creating one similar to that.
Okay, I'll look at it and see.
Thank you.
That does also include the disposal and such of records.
Well, the disposal, we follow the historical manual. That we have adopted. That's why I wasn't sure if it's the same type.
To me, records management...
And that's what I was thinking, but we are, if it's, if it's records management, Brian, like disposing of records, we do follow the Pennsylvania Historical Museum one with a set from municipalities, and that was passed by resolution years ago. I don't recall when. But, so I do have that one.
It may be, I didn't read the whole policy, I just was looking. But the thing is, like you said, I know there's a lot of discretion internally as to what, you know what I mean? And I just thought if there was a policy, then we'd all be on the same page. There's no guessing.
No, I agree, and that's why I followed that one, so, but I'll look at this one and see if it's the same.
I could be wrong. I don't know.
Do they have the address?
There is an ordinance.
Is there?
It's the website, Office of Open Records, PA Records, that.
Nothing new to report on the sidewalk loan or grant program. In your packets is resolution number twenty-four dash eight, which is the borough public complaint procedures. Again, this was provided last month for commentary. If adopted, the form will be created based on the policy and which would then be distributed, so... Deanna had reached out to me with one comment about having it stated in there that it should be put on the website, should council move in that direction. I did speak to President Schultz about that. He actually said that when we do the policy for the website, then that would list what should go on it, so he'd rather it be in that policy than, like, have the policies competing with each other.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just to answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say, you know, obviously, Manager Sealy and President Schultz have both acknowledged that paper complaint form does exist. So, honestly, I didn't understand why, at our May council meeting, Solicitor Brands would state, "From the policy, a complaint form could be crafted if we already have one." Furthermore, it was Solicitor Brand also suggested having a committee meeting to develop a policy. Vice President Jennings also advised council, "We'll get a special meeting and get a policy." At this point in time, I'm unaware of any meetings to develop such policy. Likewise, I don't recall council ever directing Manager Sealy to craft a proposed policy for resolving a complaint. I'm not sure how any of that demonstrates transparency or propolis council, myself, I guess, for making the best possible decision on proposed policy. But I think that one paragraph that I would like to share sums it up. "Any requests, suggestions, or complaints first directed to individual council members and/or counsel shall be referred to the borough manager for consideration. Investigation in action. For further action warranted based on this initial investigation, such, such action shall be in accordance with the procedures outlined above." So, basically, council signing off on giving her complete authority on this side. Now, I'm just saying out loud, I went online and looked at some others. I searched for borough complaint forms, and I found some good ones out there from different communities. I much rather would have seen a committee, like our solicitor suggested, appointed, bring in at least three different forms from that. We highlight and say, "I like this, I like that, I don't like that, I think this would suit us best." But for me to sign off on this, I told my wife, I say, "Oh, that sounds more like a gag order than that. I don't know the constitution, it just pretty much never was down to one person." If they, they pretty much got all the power, from what I'm reading, because, I mean, if you come to me, I got to go tell her. What, what, what purpose does council have here? I don't know what the ordinance says. I thought the ordinance reads that the borough manager works at the pleasure of council. I didn't think that the council worked at the pleasure of the borough manager, but I don't, who, who told you to draft the resolution, Amy?
We talked about it, so I...
Who's "we"?
Council.
Right, there's, right, we've discussed...
Was there a motion?
No.
It doesn't have to be a motion for me to bring a recommendation.
Many, many times when we, when we try to come up with resolutions, proposed resolutions, proposed ordinances, or proposed policies in different ways of doing, one would be, I guess council as a whole, we could have a long meeting and, and just craft it out of it. Secondly, is you could have a particular committee that could be dedicated to, a lot of times we do that with code and, and street and so forth. This one, a little bit different, because we don't actually have, I don't think we actually have a committee that would be dedicated for personnel procedures. However, a lot of times what we'll do is between myself, I wasn't involved in this one, but Administrator Sealy, we'll get, she's got a lot of contacts with other borough managers from other municipalities around the state. And I think it's important to utilize those resources.
Sure.
And those people will have their own policies. I think this one related very closely to the, the one that the school has, Canton Area High School has.
Oh.
And that was crafted on that, and that's fine. But that helps, because if we, and that's why, I mean, we could actually just come here and do it. It's just that, like I said, sometimes it's important to allow committees or, or the administrator or somebody like that to actually draft a, a rough draft anyway, and it may very well be just that. Now, like I said, it's a starting point.
Well, I do believe...
Which you can, I mean, nobody said, "Hey, this is, this is the deal. This is just, we might have ten boroughs before," or maybe not. Maybe you just say, "All right, we don't need the policy."
I just honestly do believe transparency breeds transparency.
I'm all in favor of transparency, but...
And you did, on official record, suggest having a committee meeting.
Yeah, and that's why...
We should have, someone should have made, you know what I mean? I'm just going by.
It's all right, sir.
Do what you say, say what you do. You said that. Jennings said, "Have a special meeting."
Transparency comes into play here because we're going to discuss this in an open meeting, just like, just like we're doing right now. That's your transparency. The question is, how do we get a starting point? Do we do it with a committee? Do we do it with myself? Do we do it with Ms. Wood? Do we do a combination?
Yeah.
The bottom line, though, is, you, you get a starting point, and then you discuss it at a, at a general meeting, at a, an open meeting, which we're doing right now. And this is a chance for us to discuss it. Now, you made a point, and there may be more. And maybe council will agree to that, and there's ways of tweaking it, and we can come back and revise it and so forth. It may be months and months and months, and sometimes you do in order to get, you know, a consensus. But this is like the first draft. Now, maybe, and sometimes we drafted them, and I know Administrator Sealy will go, let's say, we're doing a, I don't know, a fence ordinance or something like that, or a bird barrel ordinance, and then she will use contacts that she's made with all these other municipalities all over the state. And she's like, "I know they have one, I know they have one there." And she'll take like five of them, and this is, happens sometimes, not always, and she will send them to, to me. And, and ask me to see if I can take the best out of it all, so we can tailor it towards the, the needs of, of the, of borough, Canton Borough. And we can kind of take, you know, the best pieces out of each one that we believe, and that's how we can craft it. And sometimes we put it in front of the board, and the board says, "Hey, this looks good", and they pass it. But there's other times that the board doesn't have to do that, the board has to know the same, the board can say, "Listen, we don't like this paragraph, we don't like this paragraph, we don't like this section." And, or they just, "We don't like it at all, we don't want to have it at all." I remember there was, oh, this was years ago, and we had that rental ordinance, and that took a while, because there was a lot of people that came that were landlords, and they did not like that at all. And we ended up putting that on the back burner a while, because, you know, I mean, that, they're, they're kind of our employers in a way, you know, once they, they elect the people sitting at the, at the table. But we eventually did craft something. And again, it, you know, sometimes it takes a number of meetings...
Well, I think so, Dave, because, you know, obviously, I mean, Vice President Jennings asked Manager Sealy, "Hey, does, does this form exist?" Her response, "I'll be addressing that with council at a future date." Why can't it be addressed at a different date? Why can't the answer be provided tonight? Manager Sealy, "Again, I'll be addressing with the council at a different date." And it's like, "Could you just answer yes or no?" That, that's what I'm looking for in transparency.
What was the question? I mean, you asked, I'm sorry.
At the May fourteenth council meeting, Mr. Wood shared that he received notification, "No one's allowed to have this complaint form because it's a notary paper for a working official." And I had brought it up, and like I said, the official record from July ninth, two thousand eighteen irrefutably specifies, "President Schultz asked Amy Sealy to put the employee complaint on the website, provide each council member with two blank copies of the employee complaint form in case somebody wants one." And then in two thousand twenty, Mr. Brand, I attended a council meeting as a visitor. I requested an official complaint form be drafted and approved by council for residents to use.
I think that was when we were...
Administrator Sealy spoke up, "Well, we have a complaint form. No one's ever asked me for one." Well, then how do I get a copy of the complaint form? Well, you'd ask me for a copy of it, and I can email it to you.
Yeah, my recollection of the...
And how, that's how I got the complaint form.
Back in, I think it was, I don't think we ever, I mean, I came in two thousand thirteen, I think February two thousand thirteen was my first year, and I don't remember having one, but I do remember back in two thousand twenty, and I think it was when we were, it was during COVID and we were meeting at the shed. And I think something came up at that point where there was a couple of borough council members that may not be on the council map, and they had asked Administrator Sealy, Borough Manager Sealy, to put together a, some sort of like complaint form, kind of an ad hoc one. And we never really had a policy, so we sort of put the cart ahead of the horse or what have you. At this point, what we'd like to do, and I think it's on the, it's on the agenda here, is to try to craft a, a policy, you know, a comprehensive one, and then draft a new complaint form that is consistent with, with the policy. That way, we get the horse in front of the cart.
Okay. And that's like, so where I got...
Which I think, I feel like, if you're saying in front of a policy, a complaint form be crafted, I was like, "Why'd you bring this out? Because we've had a complaint form for over six years now."
We haven't had one, I understand that. Is that correct? We don't really have a policy.
I thought that was it. Now, we've got the horse ahead of the car, and we want to get the car...
Finally, I guess.
And if we don't like that policy, how's the time change it?
And I'm all for a policy. I think a policy would be great, but like I said, there has to be a little more transparency every day. You can't not answer questions and share information.
That's why we gave it to you last month, so you'd have thirty days to look it over and come up with some of these things, and that's fine. He made a point. That maybe others would share. And there might be other points, there might be other things where you would want additions, corrections, deletions, what have you. And that's the, that's where the transparency comes into play, because you get to do it as part of a full board.
All right. Well, I'll just say for the record, I, I'm a voice for the people. I'm not going to put a spike step on anybody.
Brian, what section is it?
So, I would vote no.
Brian.
What section is it in here?
Section what?
The part that you wanted to delete, or you wanted to change.
The very last paragraph. I just want to read to number nine on the back, "Any requests," and it just reverts right back to her old level of procedures.
But, Brian, if you read...
"The employee shall make a determination as to whether the complaint should be proceeded." Now, what...
Brian, if you read number seven, there's different levels, and the second level, actually, if it isn't handled through the first level, and actually with the employee first off, then it comes to council. Council is the policy regulatory hand of this. Council is not the employee.
And number eight says, "The council, after reviewing all the information relative, shall provide the complainant with a written response." It's going to have to be four, number nine.
So, "At all levels of this procedure, the employee shall determine as to whether the complaint should proceed as outlined in the policy." If you bring a complaint against me...
Where'd you read that?
Number two. "At all levels of this procedure, for employees, determine as to whether the complaint should proceed as outlined..."
If it's handled through the policy or if it should be submitted through a specialized process, you need to read the paragraphs...
In a separate policy. Well, what's the separate policy?
It doesn't say a separate policy. It says a...
Complaint process addressed in a separate policy, unless I got a different paper than you.
Right, because there are different policies within the personnel policy manual, like if it's a sexual harassment complaint or a, or a disciplinary complaint, they would be handled different than a normal complaint, and this just...
Well, if you're going to cite a policy, we should know what the policy is, is it...
It says a separate policy for a specialized complaint process.
Yeah, separate policy. Policy is a very general term. What policy specifically?
The specialized complaint process, it would depend upon which complaint that might be.
So, you have some policies in place already?
Well, there's personnel policies in place with regard to those things, yes.
Is that something council's allowed to see or you got the right to know request?
Council has had it.
I think that, is that the personnel policy procedure mandate?
Correct.
Okay.
Which would handle like specific complaints. And this isn't necessarily an employee complaint form, this is a borough complaint form. It's not just about complaining about employees, Brian.
No, I understand, Amy, but here's the thing, let me ask you this. You got nine emails from people about the motor vehicle ordinance. Someone lived in the township, maybe he'd come to visit family members in town.
Right.
Did you respond to those nine emails?
I absolutely did, and I provided them to council.
The responses? I got a copy of the emails, because Mike said you don't read.
My responses were received, thank you. What else am I supposed to respond? That I would provide it to council. I responded to every single one of them.
Received and you shared with council, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, what else was I to respond?
It's like simple things like that. Why should someone have to go through all this formal process just to share concern? It's like, it's just.
I didn't tell them they had to submit emails.
No, I'm just saying this policy, though, now, if someone once comes to me with a request, or suggestion, or a complaint, I gotta come tell you.
No.
I gotta, I'm kidding, card, go tell the teacher. Like I said, I think there's a real simple resolution out there, a real simple policy at the bottom. It even gives you that form that you can resend back to that person to let them know, hey, fifteen days you're going to be getting a response, and this is how we're going to handle it. Let's keep it simple. I don't think we need all this nonsense.
Can I make a recommendation that we do form a committee? Take this rough draft and go over it?
Clear it through President Schultz, because I don't know.
Is there a personnel committee already?
Would you be okay with that?
Not, not to my house.
It doesn't matter to me, Mike, but I know before, like when you did, she went to Youngwood, New York, Sayer, and some other borough, and got three ordinance, said, hey, this is what they have up there. I just would like to see the same with this.
No, I wouldn't say that I drafted this from the school district, because I thought it was pretty thorough, and it fit the needs. But if you're not happy with it, that's fine. I just thought I'd go local, because the school district already has.
Schultz, get a hold of President Schultz, and Mike can do a committee.
I mean, you're talking school district, you got unions and all that. This is a council. I mean, this is, I mean, it's real simple stuff. How many complaints do you get? A lot of it is just being talked about. It's like, like Dave said, come talk to me. If you have a problem, just come talk to me, tell me. I'm a big boy. I would say, okay, I don't care. You don't have to like me, I don't have to care.
Okay.
Um, I've continued reviewing options for the website and looked back to what it was discussed previously, which time consensus from all the council at the time was that it wasn't necessary due to potential cost and liability of having someone else manage it. I do have at least one proposal now for hosting and the annual cost. But again, council needs to provide direction if that's the way they want to go. And then, again, there should be a policy in place for that before any motion.
Well, I don't know who you got, Amy, but I'll tell you what, the Pennsylvania State of Burrell's got a web design program. And the web design program features include a WordPress website, which is an easy-to-use content management system that can be customized. The managed word hosting includes semi-annual website reviews by WordPress technician. And we also get an annual credit renewed yearly that may use however you want on your enrolled year for developing the website. Likewise, since we're PSAB members, we get a discount. You get an affordable twenty percent discount off the annual fee, and a twenty-five percent discount off any labor throughout the year. So, with that being said, that annual credit to use for creating the new website, publishing announcements such as meeting agendas, minutes, newsletters, events, adding photos, new photos or a photo gallery, adding online forums, Burrell complaint forums, write-to-know request forums, policies, minutes, all that good stuff, display public alerts and announcements. I mean, that'd be the perfect place to put these last three items on our agenda, because I don't know why they're on here. It's not, nothing we have to vote on. Library, Rialto Theater, Canton Chamber of Commerce, and Canton School District.
Does it give you a cost, Brian?
Well, the thing is, I mean, I can't overstep my boundaries, but you can just start on this, and they'll give you a, a website worksheet for designing. You're looking about seven hundred and fifty bucks, maybe. I don't know, give or take.
We used to use the agency affiliated with PSAB. That's who hosted us. We stepped away because due to liability reasons, PSAB was actually stepping away.
Well, this is right off their website.
I understand. I spoke to them as well. One of my concerns with them is timing for them of putting our stuff up on the page.
They manage it?
Correct. I mean, I can follow through with them on that.
Well, I just would like to get a price on it, like I said, if, if we can get some.
I have no issues doing that, and that's why I didn't give the price on the other one that I had. But I also am looking at local ones, which would be more convenient if there was an issue, and supporting the local contractors.
Would they, um, let you maintain a, a house?
I don't really have, I'll have to ask.
Yeah, it's super simple.
I'm not the Vincent Dito website.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Would you have, Walter?
We're so far. What was the last topic?
I, I don't know. I was just talking about web design, like you said.
Public complaint form. Speaking of transparency, it'd be nice if before a meeting, we had a copy of whatever was being presented at the meeting, so the public could actually comment on it. Like I, I put out a request on Facebook for a copy. I didn't receive any responses back from anybody.
No, he means like a draft resolution, and drafts are for council's eyes only until they're adopted, because if something has changed, then the wrong information is out in the public.
Drafts can be shared, though.
Drafts should stay at the council table, because if it changes, then you have the wrong information.
That may be your opinion on how to go forward, but that, that's not the legal requirements, correct?
No, I think it's an exception to the public.
It is an exception.
Yes, it's an exception that you can utilize, but it is not required. Just so you know, you, this is another misleading of you guys. The exceptions for under right to know.
We'll take it. Bye, Walter. Thank you, and please go on. GPS units, I guess.
Uh, that's just being tabled. I haven't received the answers. Resolution twenty-two-four-nine, authorizing broadband-ready communities program application. This information was received from the Central Broadband Progress Authority as part of the requirement to achieve a broadband-ready designation from the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority. This designation promotes public-private partnerships with internet service providers, and allows municipal governments to verify that they have completed steps to expedite broadband rollout in their municipality. The municipalities with the designation will also be promoted on a map on their website, on their development ability website. The progress authority is also reaching out to the local internet service providers as part of this program. And there is no financial commitment or regulation imposed on any municipality participating, participating in the program. And I would recommend that council allow Canton Burrell to participate. If the resolution is adopted, then I will be fully completing a questionnaire that goes along with it and submitting the same.
Does anybody stop? Where does this get us?
Um, it promotes the public-private partnership with internet service providers. It allows us to verify that we've completed steps to expedite the broadband process, like rollout.
So everything we did with ZDO when they came?
Correct. Or whomever else, but yeah, any of the internet providers coming in. It would expedite the process.
Does that have anything to do with all these cables that are being run down, like this big ball?
That's the dark fiber loop coming in from the county, but this, this would pertain to that, but it's not part of it.
Now, is there anything with ZDO that would, is there any agreements that like the QNET move in or anything like that, that this would affect? Do you agree what we have?
This would have any effect? This allows any internet provider to do it. We have the contract with ZDO for cable, but we don't have a contract for any of the internet.
Okay, all right. That's why I make sure we're.
Yeah, this is a pigeonhole in us, if that's what you're asking.
No more questions. Can I have a motion, please? So, Dave. Dave and Brian, any discussion, more discussion on it? No? Roll call, please.
Neil.
Hi.
Copley.
Hi.
Watkins. Jennings. Preston.
Hi.
Williams. Brian, I don't know if you still need to talk about the connect.
No, I don't want to talk about nothing, but you previously noted that you were working with the Auditor General's office on a pension audit. I just wondered if you could share an update with council on that.
Yeah, once I receive it, council will get an update. Like they will send me a report.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was underfunded, overfunded, or.
It is overfunded. And again, council will get the audit once it's finalized and completed. It's not something that happens overnight.
Very good.
Is that an annual audit?
No, it's every five.
This one was a five-year one.
Yeah.
And that's depicted by the Auditor General, not me.
Well, thank you for clarifying. I didn't know.
Um, I've started working on the budget paperwork, not looking at committees yet, but if there be current heads, um, if you start looking ahead to what large projects or purchases you might be looking at, and getting that information, so that I can start working on those things. And on their correspondence, you can see the update via the ten dot email, where you can sign up for ten dot new releases.
All right.
Well, um, council has a report of the police department, uh, their practice.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
Not anonymous.
Um, I have a letter from Officer Castle. This letter is to serve as formal notice denied. Police Officer Lisa Castle will only be available for part-time duty effective June twenty-first, twenty-four. I have accepted an alternative opportunity with another department in order to expand my knowledge and skills as a law enforcement officer. As this decision did not come easily, I would like to thank the members of this council, as well as Chief Doug Sealy for the guidance I have received during my journey into becoming a law enforcement officer. And hope to continue to serve the community as a part-time member of the Canton Burrell Police Department. I would like to regret the acts that we've offered back to part-time.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I need a kind of a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Lacy.
Yeah, it's a deep regret, again, um, to see her go. Has she been offered an exit interview?
She doesn't left.
You only get that.
She's back to part-time.
She's back to part-time. So she, she doesn't.
You got one foot out the door, dude.
Is your, Lacy, is your part-time a daily week, or do you have any?
I don't know what she's.
At least two days a week.
Two days a week here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Is that a personal change?
I'm sorry, see you.
So, we're on this subject, Dean. Does, does council have any say in the scheduling of the police officers?
Can we take a motion on the, or a vote on the motion, please?
Second, we have, we have a motion, and a second roll call, please.
Preston.
Yes, hi.
Watkins.
With regret, hi.
Williams, uh, Jennings.
With regret.
Neely.
Same with regret.
And Copley.
Oh.
Chief Department?
Counsel has a report in front of them. We had a committee meeting before this one, and I'll hand it over to George and Amy. On how the meeting went.
We're second on the low-volume project for the Upper Hunt Road. So if any more money comes available, we will be doing that. The skid steer that Dave has, it's one that Brad Cole was running out.
Warner's.
Or Warner's, I'm sorry. And they want to buy it between forty to seventy thousand. With a quid for bid, but maybe the money that we have used to rent it, if Warner's get it, will put the rent towards the purchase, like Brad Cole would do. So.
Case, what is that, case?
Yeah, case three, yeah, case three hundred series. It's fully plumbed for every, for everything that a skid steer can put on it. It's already all plumbed for everything, so.
What's council start on that? What's the budget? Look like it was money for them.
Typically, an equipment expense, which for something like this special, we can use the Act thirteen funds.
They can't use a ballpark going closer even.
Well, it'll, it'll have to bid for that price, so it'll have to quid for that.
So what you looking for, the motion to bid on it?
Yeah, motion to authorize. To authorize to bid for requests of community.
Do we need to put a, clip it on the bid, or? I'll make the motion. I think we're at a bid on it. We have one. I'll make that motion. I think we should, Dave, but I think we should try and look at some, because you can get good skid steers already plumbed on equipment sites all day long for what you were attempting.
Well, between forty to seventy, that was a ballpark.
I think seventy is considerably high.
Pretty much brand new.
I was just trying to provide the range, so people were aware of what they cost.
Does this machine only have six hundred and fifty hours on it?
It's still quite bad. No. Six hundred and fifty hours quite bad. I've had my tractor for three years, and I got seventy-nine hours in it, nine bullet.
This one's eleven years old.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's good, but.
So would the Act thirteen money be good towards something? Like, I don't think it would be.
And there's enough in the Act thirteen that would likely, depending on.
So that's something we'd have to prove.
They're going to put it up for sale, but we'd have to bid on it.
No.
No?
We're going to authorize for bids, and anybody who has one will submit a bid.
See what I'm saying? So you'd have to put the word up.
Right, we will be advertising a bid, yes.
Would that go to the, what was it called, ten biz? Or would that be just?
This will probably just stand in the newspaper, since it's not a contract.
Would Co-Stars be something available to look at?
For new.
For new, they won't do much with you.
Right.
I mean, you can, but you're probably going to get somebody else's piece of crap to, you know, somebody else's headache, because they beat the thing to death.
Right.
I didn't have a second.
We need a, can I have a second on that, please? Any more discussion? No, roll call, please.
Watkins. Uh, Neely. Copley.
Hi.
Williams. Uh, Preston.
Hi.
Jennings.
Hi. Dave Ross Tree, yard waste. We, we talked a little bit about it. Dean's going to check with the Cubs boys to see if we can take at least bigger stuff down, because they have a big pile of wood down there. And see if they will just take the big chunks of wood, and we can drop it off down there. We can just give it to them that way. Is that you?
I know nothing about it.
Uh-huh?
I know nothing about it.
You bet, you bet.
So Dean hasn't talked to you yet.
We talked about it tonight, Dean, but.
We're having trouble getting rid of, like, like, big bases, like stumps, and, you know, not stumps, but the trees. We can probably get rid of the brush, but it's just the stumps that, or not stumps, but the main part of the trees. A lot of it, you know, if we can bring them down, down there to dump them off, and you guys could just sell them for bar away.
Off to the malls.
You kind of, I'll talk to them tomorrow.
You kind of talked, Dave, to the town chief too about.
Yeah, he was going to talk to Kale, Kale offer to, well, he thinks he can get them to put it into the limbs and stuff down where they're filling in down there to kind of help fill in stuff.
Does our landfill do mulp or anything?
I don't honestly know, Scott. I really don't.
I know they have one down.
I know they do chips and stuff, yeah.
And start chipping it up and mulp.
Right, right. Also, with regards to that, effective tonight, I am stepping down as the head chair for the street. I don't know if Mike will put it, whether it'll be Deanna, but if Mike wishes, I will stay on as not, not the head chair, but I will be the second person.
Just on the brush and trees waste, you guys were on skid steer. Did we do anything, any conversation about buying a drummer? Or anything, or chipper? Sorry, not drummer.
I talked to Terry Sheets, a decent used one. They run anywhere between thirty-five to forty thousand. A decent used one that, you know, is not beat to death, but that's part of it.
Brad, I will say that we did the wood chips years ago, and people won't take the big stuff. They want the colored buying stuff. Like, it ended up just sitting up there, and we had to, I mean, I'm not a poet, but we have tried it.
I know they come in, like, they get all their stuff out back, and there's always trucks, so.
When we, when I was, when I worked for Burrell, we had no trouble getting rid of the chips. Because, well, of course, we didn't, we, we chipped it, but also like tree smokes would bring their stuff in. And people come in and get it to do their banks, and that's what we had over at work. They, they do their banks and law stuff.
Yeah, good regards, composting. It's all going to break down eventually.
All right, I'm just asking if any, if we ventured that or not.
Recreation.
Um, reports in the packets, um, what I have for an update is we did get another, uh, quoted in from another engineering firm that was substantially higher than the first quote, so we're still kind of on that. The quotes that were engineering firm to draw up, what the pool means.
Do you want to repair everybody?
Repair.
Whether they decide they continue.
Yeah.
What are these quoted amounts?
I don't have them offhand in front of me. Amy, do you have them?
What was the question?
Uh, quoted amounts for.
I can't say what the quoted amounts are, because it's an ongoing construction project.
Hmm, okay.
Well, if I tell you the quotes and we go to a third company, then they're going to have the numbers that are out there. It's an ongoing project.
It's not fair to the other bidders.
Well, we haven't, we haven't bided any of it. These are just.
No, but when we do, you can't provide that information.
Are these quotes just for the information?
These quotes would be for drawings and.
The drawing, yeah, just the drawing.
But not for actual work.
No.
Just drawings to redesign.
Which would then allow me to go for pumping to.
To do that.
Council can make a decision which direction, and then we can go for pumping.
So, Brad, are you, are you seriously thinking about putting a brand-new pool in, or are you going to look at maybe downsizing, and doing like a splash pad or something?
Different things, if we, I want to look at, see what the existing pool would cost to completely redo that one first. I like to keep the identity that we already have there.
Right.
And then just fix what we got. If it's going to be high, then I'd rather just minimize the size of the pool. Like I had Amy, I can see about with lifeguards, because we have issues with lifeguarding. If we go to a four-foot pool or a five-foot pool, do we need to maintain lifeguards, or can we not have them? On the other side of that is maybe a splash pad for the little kids.
Right.
And then just a pool, no diving board, no nothing like that. And then we can get rid of the lifeguard. And then just have somebody that oversees the park as park manager. You got the pool, the supplies, you got the pickleball court, a new basketball court coming in.
Tennis court.
Tennis court, uh, you know, they got all sorts of stuff down there that somebody can manage.
What else is wrong with the pool?
Uh, well, I was saying last time, the decking is bad, the cement decking. Um, the interior of the pool probably just need to be painted. We're not sure on cracks on the base, but in the crawl spaces, there's a lot of plumbing that goes through the pool. All that cast iron pipe is starting to disintegrate, basically. So they're basically cutting that out and just kind of putting in new sections as they go to keep it going. There's, I believe, what, two, where's the, two pumps are down? Was there two pump, bad pumps down there, or just one bad pump? It needs to be replaced.
The cool.
The pumps are good.
Okay, the pumps are good.
The valves for circulating.
The valves for circulating for the.
All right, yeah, valves, cast iron and the cement.
Is it cast iron in the pool itself or is it all?
End lines go into the pool, that's what's rusting off.
The end lines that go into the cement and then under the pool decking, there's a crawl space, it goes all the way around the pool, that's where all the plumbing comes through.
And if you're down in that, it blows apart, you ain't getting out.
Yeah, they're going to drown in there, it's literally a crawl space.
Been there, done that.
So basically just forty nine.
It needs new plumbing.
And inaccessible plumbing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's why I was curious, I wasn't sure whether or not it was underneath, uh, ground or inside the concrete.
No, it's actually, it's kind of, yes, it's underground and it's between.
Outside wall, inside wall. There's an inaccessible.
Yeah, yeah.
So, does anyone right now have the pesticide license to be able to handle the chlorine and all the?
Not, oh, not for this year, no, he hasn't renewed it, so that's another thing. We have lifeguards this year, the same issues with the free wheel heating or new as life.
Why you want to start thinking about it here?
Well, we got a couple we're going to do with it first because this is the second year, it's just more degrading and it's, it's just going to dissolve.
Have you thought about having a contractor put down and just look really instead of engineering, see what they would say for a cost? Because I had a contractor down there to look at the outside, I mean, obviously, he said it wouldn't be that bad of a fix.
The, the only problem with that would be, is if we do go out and ask DCNR for money and we do put this out for grant, it has to be done on engineering draw.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I can't really.
But if you had a contractor in, in there saying, this is how much kind of cost and the community says we'll pay for it.
Yeah.
I mean, then you don't have to go out for grants and then it's up and running next year.
Pretty much what the engineering firm is doing for us, telling us what it needs, so.
Yeah, but like a pool contractor could just come in.
Yeah, that's what these engineering firms are.
These engineering firms are cool ones.
They, they've all built, like this one we had that we've been working with since December, I believe, is.
Does it have to be an engineering firm?
Yes, if you're, if you're going for money.
I know if you're going for grants.
Yeah, which we are, because we don't have the type of budget to pay seven thousand grand a pool out of pocket, so we're going to have to go for grants.
My thought is if you don't need a new pool, if the pool can be resurfaced and the plumbing can be replaced.
I, I just think the money is going to be too high that we have in the budget and the costs, we're still going to have to go out for donations and everything else on there.
Grant for the chemicals.
Yeah, so.
Well, I just know that there's contractors that are willing to look at it and will look at it for free, so I.
Well, the engineer looked at it for free.
Yeah, it just.
Yeah, he wasn't willing to give a quote, right?
Not unless we, he gave us a quote, a rough idea of what it would cost to do, fix the pool.
Two hundred and fifty thousand plus.
Yes, two hundred and fifty plus. So that was just to fix the pool, existing pool that we had for them, that's why we asked another engineering firm what they were and they were a little higher.
Okay.
So.
I thought those were the quotes for getting a quote on how much it would cost.
Quotes are to get cost to fix and then what they're going to draw up for new plans to put in the place.
Okay.
So the two hundred and fifty thousand is a rough idea of, okay, this, that was just kind of a determination, do we want to move forward on this to fix this pool or do we want to look at other ideas? Maybe a splash pad, one cost is a hundred and seventy thousand. I, I don't know, we haven't looked at that avenue yet, but right now to fix the existing pool we have is roughly with one firm is around two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
At three hundred, depending on what you're going to do.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
All right. Is that on, is that it, is that on the recreation, Dave?
I stopped on the, I'm doing my grant.
Did that answer anything? Did that answer everything okay or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah. It's good, um, and this is just food for thought on the pool. And I'm just throwing this out there, yeah, yeah, which is a really big word. Something happened and we get the funding to rebuild the pool. And it's all nice and pretty and it's all open, it's great. And if we're able to hire the lifeguards and the manager, okay? Then we need people to come to the pool to support it. And unfortunately, we look at, you know, some of the numbers, you know, I'm just going through some of these here. This is, um, from August of twenty one to July of twenty one. I mean, some of these days, there's only like five to ten paying people. So if you have three guard, three lifeguards in there at say, for ease of arithmetic, ten dollars an hour for eight hours. So there's two hundred and forty dollars that you paid in wages just with lifeguards.
Yeah, but what about your family membership, what we're paid?
Yep, and taking them into account, which there are a lot of people that come down with the family memberships, but they're a lot cheaper.
Well, yeah, but you still got to figure out in the cost, you can't just.
Well, I, I'm just throwing some numbers out there, giving people something to think about, you know? Unfortunately, in today's society, the panel isn't a place where people go.
What are your pre-COVID numbers?
No.
Do you have any pre-COVID, like what's now?
No.
That would be a very like rough estimate if we're, if we're going off of COVID numbers, that, that's, that's going to be tough decimal. So then that, that's how we manipulate numbers.
So, so I drove by the Troy Pool Saturday.
But that would be your, your just visual, that doesn't affect, we're talking numbers. Because everything that we go off of in these meetings is facts, I always get told about facts.
I'm just asking people to think about this, the world has changed, okay?
But we're asking for statistics, we, I mean, not to be rude, but we don't really care about you driving by the Troy Pool and looking at numbers. We're asking your, what you're doing is what you always say that you dislike, which is manipulating facts. So the facts are, it's very important to go off of pre-COVID numbers because talk to many businesses that sunk during COVID. I mean, this is, and when we're talking about small businesses, you don't factor in an entire country going, you know, through this terrible, you know, ordeal.
All right, Alex, I'm sorry.
So we need pre-COVID numbers.
All right, all right.
All right, just forget I brought it up, Alex.
That's, that's the gist of it.
All right. Yeah, yeah.
Um, I would say that the splash pad, the swimming turtle, I feel like Lonsburg is a relatively same size.
Exactly, if you build it, they will come.
They, they have a full house all the time, dollars, I have no idea. Um, but I almost feel like this project, our community does want, and yeah, maybe that's the case, if you build it, they will come. I do think that will get a nice one.
Splash pads are a good idea.
A nice, yeah.
I agree with that, um, yeah, I was, I was on vacation here a little while ago down south. And where my son lives, every cul-de-sac has a splash pad and they were all pissed.
And keep in mind, if they, they had a, some of the religious groups in the town that maybe would like to try and take it over.
Right.
Maybe they could get some money that we can't get.
Yeah.
So that could be a valuable option as well to look at.
I've heard plenty of people from Canton are going to Boss because they can't access here. And something that a lot of people have told me in the community is that management has been a big issue of why they stopped going. It, it just, it was too much of a hassle dealing with some management, sometimes there was issues with, uh, people at the pool and depending on who you were, you were allowed to do whatever you wanted to do. It, it caused a rift where people weren't wanting to go, so numbers went down. And if you go back to the same management process, yeah, the pool's going to be useless. That needs to be changed, of everybody in charge all the way up to the top of the pool. If, if I was allowed to continue where I was heading with a splash pad. People are just commenting. Yeah, um, with splash pads, you don't, don't need the lifeguards, you don't need the full-time management. It's, it's more of a self-serve type environment, um. Self-serve. I think personally, that's a new way to build.
Yeah, you still have to drink the water. Price line either.
Let's move on.
Amy, do you have any other grants?
I do, so I did go and meet with the Bradford County Commissioners regarding the funding shortage for the twenty twenty two project, which is the comfort station. And at their June twenty seventh meeting, they approved a letter of commitment to the borough to match up to fifteen thousand of the grant funding through DCNR. I have also submitted the funding amendment to DCNR for the other fifteen thousand and that has to go through the meeting process. So, um, we're on the wait and see for that. And then the notice to proceed has been granted to the contractor for the comfort station. And as far as the basketball court rehab, that will, we will work on starting to bidding at that next.
So I, I do have a question, because I'm not familiar with the comfort station.
Yeah, outside bathroom.
Okay, that's what I thought, so the borough is responsible for cleaning and all of those things on a daily basis?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, size, location, where?
It's going, catty cornered in the baby pool.
Okay.
Um, the sidewalk will come off because it'll be ADA access and it's a double unit, I don't recall the size, I'll flip out of my hair, so it's a two unit.
Okay, so that'll be regardless whether there's a pool?
Correct, and that's one of the main reasons why is because currently there's no outside restroom facilities with the pool not being open.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's self-composting, right?
Yeah.
Hey, Coach.
Counsel, do you have two reports on this?
Yeah, we have your reports in front of you. You have something to speak about the hundred dollars?
Deanna Apple, would that be called?
The fees and permits?
I did, I, I would like to see, um, council, how available to them the cost of permits, the fees. Um, so that, and there, there has to be some kind of list somewhere. Um, the public is very, very interested in these things and I think they do have a right to know what they are. Um, I also, and I saw in the budget area, um, how much anticipated, I wondered what the revenue was and I saw that in the address, was nice to see. Um, I'm just wondering if we could, to encourage new business, new residents, you know, those kind of things. If we could consider a small six-month hiatus from either half-price permit fees or, you know, something that we could do.
So are you talking zoning permits or assessment permits?
Any or all.
So there may be some state statutes where if we have them in place, they are required to be provided to the state or to the county at least. Um, I don't have our fee schedule, but what I, in front of me, but what I did do after this was brought up to me, we are the cheapest, maybe tied in Bradford County as far as the permits. I think, Amy, if I'm not mistaken, our most expensive assessment permit is fifty bucks.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, okay.
Um, other municipalities, very comparable to our size, get up into, in some places, could be thousands because it's a percentage of the project cost.
Okay, all right.
So I think, you know, and there's reason that permits are there.
Yes.
They're not revenue generators because I don't think we make money off of them, we really don't, I don't pay much attention to that. But they're there, Brian, I'll get to you in a minute, Steve.
No, I can.
Okay. One of the reasons they're there is to make sure that, say, in a construction process, outside of the UCC permits, which are state regulated, we can't do away with those anyway. But, and I'll use a sidewalk construction because it's the easiest way to provide a medical.
Okay.
Would you want as a homeowner, a contractor, that you got the best price from? Hey, I'm not going to worry about the permit, I'm just going to put, I'm going to pour this concrete right over the grass, I'm not going to excavate, I'm not going to base, put a base in. That's why we have the permitting process. It's not to cause rift, it's, it's to protect the property.
Sure.
Because if that sidewalk chip pushes up and somebody trips and it comes back and there was no proper process or exceptional industry standard coming, that puts you on.
That makes sense.
Same thing with roofing, you know, it's, I mean, that council can do what they want with the permits, it doesn't affect me, I'm just trying to explain why we have them in place.
Yeah. No, I can understand that. Yes.
And certain, because we have the program in place, I understand if the statute is out, we have to provide those permit numbers to the county as part of their assessment program for property damage.
Okay, we, that involves all of the permits, um, I'm talking also cost. Um, is there standards for that? Can the council say?
It's pretty much, I mean, council can set the fee schedule order as well, what I'm saying is that out of every, almost every municipality.
Yeah, I don't want to do away with permits because I think they do serve a good.
But it also costs time to draft them off, to process them, costs me time to learn and look at your application and sign them. So I don't, you know, I mean, again, I don't care either way, it doesn't make any sense to me. But it's a loss on the, on the financial side of it. In reality, for our borough, I don't know, these are for assessment, but zoning is, is different and it's a similar process.
Okay.
In reality, the cost of a permit in our borough for most projects is absolutely negative. Now, zoning might be different, that's Amy's side, I don't know what the zoning costs are, I don't know if they're set by state. I do know that, and I challenge anybody to find an incorporated municipality within the Commonwealth that does not have some sort of zoning or permitting side. Many municipalities list, list all of their assessment permits within their zoning fees. And we are, we actually are not as permitted structurally, uh, that's not the word I'm looking for, but we don't permit as much as a lot of other municipalities. So some of the municipalities that I've spoken with, they, instead of just doing the siding or roofing, it's any exterior alteration. So that's doors, windows, everything is moved.
Okay.
We have some municipalities that I looked up that per, make you get a permit for a roof sale. So I don't, you know, we're, we're relatively on the low side on permitting and fees, we really are.
Okay, yeah.
Deanna, we do have a, we do have a piece because I think we, we passed a resolution, I think it's in January.
Yeah.
I think it's the same one from two thousand nineteen, but we, um, which, I mean, we knew you weren't here in January, but no, no, I understand, but we do do a, uh, basically a resolution for, for fees and charges and so.
And it incorporates not just that, like it also incorporates like bank fees for a NSF check. So it's, it's basically a fee schedule resolution for all fees. And so it does get amended sometimes throughout the year, right, like the swimming pool fees. I just don't think it's been amended since you've been, yeah, but I will.
All right.
But I'm sharing that, and when people come in for a permit, they get a copy of that, so it is available.
Okay.
Um, and should we go the direction of a website, it's obviously something, even though it's not by ordinance, it would be put up on that as well. Okay, so it's not that it's hidden, it's just, if people need to know what they are, they ask and they're provided.
Okay.
That's not true.
For a project.
Okay.
Should, should be a general list of these.
I just.
Yes, Alex.
Yeah, so, I mean, Deanna made a really great point is I think if you, if council decides they want to talk to community members, they will find this to be true. And that's where Troy does not require a siding permit. So we're, well, one of the things that I've seen is whenever we bring up, you know, addressing it, you know, we had a meeting previous where, oh yeah, you know, it's, you know, we need to, we'll sit down, that's council's in charge of that and well. But Troy doesn't require a siding permit. Now, if you're going to side over a house or side a house, you know, what, my question is what kind of inspections are we doing then? There, what's the regulation, what's the qualifications for that? Well, there really isn't any, right, you're just getting a permit to say that you can do the job. Troy does not require one, other boroughs do not require one. So I think it's a great point that we do need to go through and decide what, you know, do we need, what do we not? So I found out recently, we don't need a permit to roof over a house, right? So when we talk about, you know, permitting in, in, in terms of assisting residents with quality of contracting, that doesn't make any sense. That doesn't, because the way that we currently have it set up, we're picking and choosing what we decide is, is, is good. So we do need to sit down and we need to look at what's important, what is not, and it seems like whenever it's brought up, there's this huge backlash of, well, other boroughs and this and that. I don't care what anybody's doing, look, look at what we need to do to make this town better and we need to talk to our current residences and decide what do the people want, what do the people need? And so there are certain things, when you talk about code inspections and we're talking about, I mean, they're outside of the control of Canton. But there are things that we don't have to do as a borough, right? So what can we do to assist, what can we do to help, what can we do to not get these aggressive responses that we seem to get every time we question any sort of code or any sort of, you know, permitting fees? And so we do need to discuss this and we need to set, like, the problem is we bring stuff up, but there just never seems to be a meeting, there never seems to be any, you know, oh, well, yeah, well, and then nobody hears anything about it, nothing happens. There's this attack, we don't know, you know, borough knows better, council knows better, and it's frustrating. Count, I mean, talk, and my, my, my just plea to council is actually go out and talk to residents, actually, that's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Every municipality you go to has different permitting, Alex, I mean, just because.
You guys got something you want to share with the?
I, I just said that, I don't, I mean, what?
Yeah, but just because Troy doesn't permit something and we do, I'm sure there's things that Troy does permit that we don't.
So when the residents has come and it is, like I said, go talk to residents and they say, we need to really look at what we're doing, let's do that, go discuss it. Truthfully, because you say that you're open, go go talk. I, I'd ask you to go talk to every business in town, I'd ask you to go talk to a few dozen residences, just randomly, and you'll find this to be true. But you don't seem to take any information from the people who elected. I would, I would ask you to go really look, truthfully.
All right, thank you, Alex, yes.
Thank you, Alex.
I made a request for all borough permit fees, I was, I, I assumed there had been a list.
I made a request for old borough permit fees, I was, I, I assumed there had been a list, I was told I asked for too much, and it was denied. No, no communications about what am I looking for, uh, this is a list of what we have, do you want something else? No, you can't have this. So when, so you're only allowed to have the fee if you come in for the project, and you don't know what fees or what projects that you have to come in for, it makes it impossible to figure out what you actually need. You're gonna come in, ask for a roofing permit, they say, well, here's your roofing permit, well, no, never mind, that doesn't actually exist, as some people have experienced. I asked for a list so I could post it online of all the fees, and now I have to re-ask for each resolution to try, and it could've just been handed, I mean, if, if there's generally a list of all the fees, it, it could've been handed to me in thirty seconds, I could've put it online, and the entire community would've known what fees exist.
And the committee was begging for it.
Alright, thank you. And it, it was a no.
It will be addressed.
Thank you.
Do we have anywhere a list of what is required, like, what requires a code, like, one that's laid out that says roofing permit, sidewalk permit, sidewalk permit?
Yeah, that's on the, the fee schedule.
Okay.
But again, it's not just a fee schedule for that, it is a fee schedule for other things.
Yeah. And it's a, it's a resolution, it's not on the ordinance website.
Now, does it state anywhere in here, does it give a brief description of what it entails? Like, if I wanna put in a new sidewalk, does it say that you need to do this, this, and that?
I think it does have a description, I'm not gonna try to quote wording on it, because I don't look at it that well.
Cause I would like to see, like, what the demolition, the demolition code states, because demolishing, if you look up the meaning, says an action or process demolished or being demolished is a motivation, use equipment to demolish a building. That one's Webster's, another one is to pull or knock down a building to be demolished or make way for a shopping center. You can look at it as, um, a citation that was just recently put out, that no one was aware that they needed a permit to demolish, or they didn't even demolish, they took down a building, piece by piece, and relocated it to be put up somewhere else. That's not being demolished, it doesn't meet the definition of being demolished. So I'd like to see what a demolishing permit is required, what it states. Cause if a building's been excavated or being torn down by a piece of equipment. Cause if you're to disassemble something and take it down piece by piece, bolt by bolt, to be reassembled somewhere else, that's not demolished. So I'm just putting that up.
Okay, fire department, right?
Thirty-three calls for the month of June, and I guess we'll go on to where Brett just slipped off. Uh, June twelfth, we've received a letter from the zoning officer, we had a building down at the fairgrounds, which was our own, old tractor shed. This building here, we took it down piece by piece, and it got hauled off. We have a thirty-dollar permit fee she wants, uh, plus she wants us to do a plot and everything else. It's borderline whether that building's even in the borough. Attached, also dated four twenty-five twenty-four, is an aerial view, so this is going on during the time contract dispute. So what I'm asking council is to waive this fee, since we took this screw-by-screw down, and it was relocated. Those festival grounds are deemed by Pima as festival grounds.
Does the borough have a drone?
Does the borough have a what?
A drone.
No.
That's probably somebody that took a picture of it.
No, it's not a drone picture, if I can please explain this to zoning officer, that is actually a parcel map viewer picture, it is not from a drone, it is from the computer. And because nobody communicated about what was being done, the zoning officer, myself, can only assume that a building was demolished. Um, it, from my map, it showed that it was in the borough, um, it's also in the floodplain, which there are different regulations for. And again, had somebody communicated with, it wasn't a citation, it was just a letter with a permit application, and council cannot waive the fees because that is discrimination. Um, and that has been dealt with before, and brought up, and reviewed by, by the attorney, because it's, um-
So different than, than a variance?
No, a variance is different, you're asking a individual waiver of a fee, a variance goes through a process. Council does not have the authority to waive due to discrimination.
Okay, so, um, East South Ave, a building was pulled down, burned illegally for a week, and the only reason that got taken care of, I mentioned something Doug. Second of all, up by the fire station, the guy who has a tractor trailer, put in a building up there, is there a permit for that? I mean, do we got dual standards here?
Well, actually, there is a permit for that one up there.
Okay.
Um, not, so, just so you're aware, and the one on East South Avenue was, I believe, being dealt with legally, if I'm not mistaken, correct, John?
I believe so, yes.
So, again, handled the same way, when we learn, we send out the appropriate letters.
But who, but who was out snooping, or who, who told you that it was being tore down? Somebody had to drive by and see that the building being torn down. And I'm pretty sure it was Doug, because Doug drives around all the time.
Well, actually, it was me, I was heading someplace personally and saw it, and that's when I-
Yeah, just like the night you drove by and seen me tearing the sidewalk out for the fire coming when I worked for the borough.
I was driving by you.
Amy, you did too, because you were on your phone, and many you drove by, and I was in a meeting two weeks later, getting my, losing my job because of you. Don't stand and sit there and tell me.
Alright, we'll, we'll, we'll pay the thirty dollars, we was just gonna ask council to waive it.
Well, if you're telling me it wasn't demolished, and you're, again, I didn't know what you were doing, because there was no communication, and as has been said here, yes, we need to communicate, but communicate works both sides.
Then if you seen it, why didn't you call him?
Because I do things by letter to protect my job here at the borough.
You could've emailed them and asked them, right?
Well, as, as a borough, we've decided no warnings can go out, it has to be fines immediately.
Yeah, alright guys, come on.
It wasn't a fine, it was the permit form with a letter, there was no fine attached.
The building was already gone.
Correct, because when I saw it, it literally was four posts standing on the ground, and that's what I-
Most people would assume that you don't have to pay some of the government, of course, to tear something down, if you build it.
Actually, code inspections also requires a demolition permit through the U C C.
Well, personally, I think it's questionable on its own occasions, so it's the borough's burden of proof to decide whether or not it's in the borough or the township at your expense.
Yeah, I get, I get the impression that now that we've talked about it, we know that it wasn't demolished.
Right.
So we don't-
Well, so I think if you don't, if you're gonna, if you're gonna- So ocean defines demolition as the dismantling, raising, destroying, or wrecking of an building, commas separating those words. So dismantling, under ocean definition-
That's an ocean, we're not in OSHA State.
Huh?
We're not in OSHA State.
So for this is my main point, you can provide a hundred different types of-
We're not in OSHA State, we're in Pennsylvania.
Huh? So what, what's Pennsylvania's?
What I just read, what, what, I'm just saying, I, I just wanted to put it out there, what the definition said for the code permit versus what happened, that's simple.
And again, I didn't know that's what happened, I just saw a building come down.
I, I do, I do see something in that, I gotta, I'm probably going off on saying this, but the spit-for-cat stuff needs to stop, and let's be adults on everything. Cause it seems like somebody takes shots, and the next thing you know, two months later, we're doing something else, we're going back and forth. This needs to stop, and I just run this to the borough.
Exactly.
I'm ending it on that.
Exactly, and that's the problem, because it's not who put the permit in, it's what, why he's in it, ain't-
It's a party all the time, it's a third apartment, you were getting thrown under the bus, you were, boy!
Wow, that's professional.
Alright, let's move on.
Alright, uh, one last thing for council, uh, Kent Township said they would take us, the rest of our properties, and annex them in township.
I hope they do.
So, I'm just-
Can't blame you.
Back in, the social building, fairgrounds, council's approval, so we can proceed with it.
Uh, David, we've only ever annexed ones down at the school, and that's just not an approval, you act like there's paperwork that you provided and stuff, correct? It has to go through the courthouse or something.
I've, I've never done it, I have no idea how you go about annexing, but they can certainly pursue that, but they, yeah, I'm sure-
I, I'm just asking council's permission, so we can proceed with the next step.
But I don't think it's our permission until we're provided something from the township that they want to take it, that's what I'm saying.
I think what he's saying is, is township going, is the borough going to fight?
Well, he just asked for permission.
Right.
Permission is different than fighting. I don't think they can take a vote on it until we have something official that's saying the township is willing to take it, and there's maps showing exactly what parcels and such.
Is council okay with it or not? That's what we always wanted to know.
Yeah.
Will they, will they be on board with it? Thank you, council, if this is something the fire department wants to do?
I'm fine with it, move it in, then we'll be interested in the township.
It's the first I've heard of, I have no idea what it entails, or why, or-
We got five out of seven under the law.
It's always wide.
Deanna, it's wide.
I don't trust your information, so don't look for your answers. Oh, that's fine. My answer is, I don't know the answer.
It's a pretty simple one. Answer to that.
So I don't, I don't know the answer to that, um, if it's something you wanna do, it seems like you should-
It, it seems like they have-
I mean, somebody you have to talk with attorney of some sort.
Yeah.
And they'll get us a letter and tell us what they intend to do, and at that point, we'll have something we can vote on. I have no, if you wanna go to the township, I have no problem with it, but I don't know what the procedure is.
Yeah, townships are, Richmond Township's already talked.
Right, we just need the letter to go through.
Right.
I don't know what the answer is, doesn't make any difference.
Latest on the generator, Amy?
I'm not sure what the advantage is. That's okay.
I'm working on updating paperwork to get it to the solicitor and engineer for review.
Alright, emergency management, Brett?
Uh, we just got a thing here from, uh, pipeline safety for Rep. Sol, uh, they're gonna be having a dinner, I just got it tonight, I didn't open up to see what the actual date is of that. Um, the operations planning coordinator, Key Stackhouse put out a memo, electronic version of the latest emergency handbook for municipalities, which we have ours here now. Um, that'll be put in, and we adopted all that last time for the emergency operations.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Solicitor's report?
No, no report for, uh, right?
Mayor?
Oh, I think I set it up for this evening, please.
Your council program?
He's got his business, so he wants to all of it.
Okay, you have your information on the back. Downtown celebration will be Saturday. I'm assuming the new truck will be there, correct, right?
If we're getting in service.
That's awesome. The good in the order, the next meeting will be August twelfth, um, apparently I don't get put on the agenda.
No, if there's a need for an executive session, you can say that, I believe Brian Coe will need a one too, we don't list items for executive session, because you have to say what you're for.
Bein' with your personnel reasons, so.
Okay.
Well, before, before council does that, um, is there any chance you guys could take a vote today to put the agenda on the Facebook page?
It's not on the agenda to vote on.
Well, you can, you can add it. Uh, it hasn't gone to the record yet.
As I stated last month, I'm not using the social media page-
I'm trying to speak to council, please.
Visit or comment are over.
The council can decide whether or not, somebody can speak afterwards. This is important. Um, I, I would like to see the agenda on the Facebook page next month, for the next, for the next meetings. Uh, it informs the community, it, it makes it easier for everybody, it's a couple of clicks. And it is my belief that as a requirement of the law, I will have my attorney look into whether or not that is something to go forward with. Um, the other thing is executive sessions, you have to be more detailed about what your executive sessions are about. Um, that's something else that I'm willing to go forward with lawsuit time. Uh, the solicitor knows that that's not me just talking on my ass, I'm being serious. I would rather not sue council over such simple things. When you have executive sessions, you have to tell us about them. Um, you don't have to give the details of them, you have to give a description of what it's about. Personnel reasons isn't good enough, legal reasons, not good enough, the courts have weighed in on this.
I agree, I agree with you, well, I don't think anybody's asked for that yet, they might.
I've been asking, I mean-
No, 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 I don't think anybody said, we're gonna have an, I'd like to have an executive session, I'd like to have an executive session about this person, this person regarding such things, I haven't heard that yet.
Right, but I, that's why I'm bringing up now, so that it can be-
I know, I thought you were talking about, uh, if somebody had made one already, because I haven't heard, okay.
No, no, and, and the problem has been that in the past-
Several months back, Councilman Jennings brought up about the chief of police, and that had to go into an executive session, that was brought up.
But there, there's been multiple executive sessions that that information hasn't been provided. I, I didn't get my retainer in time for last month, is basically what it is. Um, I, I wanna see things get improved. And-
That comes to me.
And I'll be quite honest, I, I think your solicitor's been misguided you by quite a bit. Uh, the right to know law is not a law of confidentiality, you can provide information that you want to provide, as long as another law doesn't prevent it. If it says there's an exemption, those are not requirements that you can't provide that information. And council members can absolutely provide information to the public that is not confidential information.
I think, well, you're referring to the, um, the resolution, the proposed resolution, that you're reaching out on Facebook and asking if members would share that with you.
Yes.
And, uh, I think, I talked to Mr. Seale about it, she, she, she found that, and, and I said, well, yeah, I think that they should, they should know that this is not something that is, usually, what, our, our procedure is to go through the right-to-know request, and, and fill out a right-to-know form. And, uh, and that's fine, and-
But that's not a legal requirement.
No, just a minute, and if you had done that, probably, it would've been denied, because it is not, right, but that's not what we do, is that instead of reaching out to, uh, the, uh, the members of council. The problem with reaching out to members of council is, let's say they did disseminate something, you know, the whole idea for efficient government is maybe to give them a proposal to look at for thirty days, if I have it, and they can consider it, and then they can come back and we can talk about it. And that's fine, I mean, I don't know, I, actually, to be honest with you, I'm not sure there's any penalty for disseminating. The problem, though, is if you do disseminate it, and if you do disseminate it, then, um, you know, the administration might be more, um, they might be, uh, discouraged about giving it out thirty days ahead of time, you know, because there's a rea, I mean, my thinking is, is that there's a reason why, I'm not sure exactly what it is, there's a reason why the General Assembly probably made that an exception. Um, whether it's policy, resolution, ordinance, proposals. Uh, and I guess it's probably because, while the, um, General Assembly wants, and certainly wants to promote transparency, they also understand that sometimes when it comes to policy decisions, it's easier for seventh people to maybe make that policy, and focus on the policy rather than have, say, in this county, or this borough, nineteen. So I think that's probably the thing, but, no, I think that's right, I don't think that there's necessarily a penalty if, um, let's say a council member decides, yeah, I've, I've got this policy, um, you know, the rest of us are gonna look it over for, you know, thirty days, and then come back and discuss it, and they wanna actually, you know, disseminate it, I don't think there's any penalty for doing it, but it just, uh, it might, it kind of, but again, you're trying to weigh, um, the efficiency of government and then the transparency element, so that's, that's the way I see it.
I personally think more transparency is almost, almost always better.
Yeah, but there's, yeah, there's a reason why they, there's some reason that General Assembly said that that is not a, something that would be considered a public record. There's a reason why it's an exemption of public record, right? I don't know exactly what it is, I can only, you know-
But they crafted the law in such a way that you don't have to obey that, there's, there's no requirement not to release, they're not saying you can't release this information.
I don't think-
They said, I can have a choice in releasing it or not.
I'm not aware of that, I agree, I'm, I'm not aware of that, it's just that there's a reason why it's, you know, it's exempt, and, and I, that's the only thing I can think of, is that most likely is that they're, they're trying to promote, or they're trying to balance the efficiency element with the transparency.
It's right on the right-to-know webpage, it's spelled out in, in English.
They, they make it extremely obvious that-
Alright, we're gonna go into our executive session. Alright, um, no action, unfortunately was taken on the police department or Miss Amy, so, um, I don't know what happened. Like normal, I'll lose my time again, so. So, then, as I said, the next meeting will be August twelfth, here through John Moss or Borough Hall.
So the executive sessions, one was personnel for police department-
And borough, borough manager.
-related to that kind of action.
There were no actions taken.
Well, right, but-
There was a lawsuit, there was a third one.
There was a third one, yes.
Yeah, there was a, I requested, uh, executive session for personnel of a non-uniformed employee.
Okay.
Okay?
Related to, like, just generally related to, well-
Yeah, it was just all performed-
Job performance.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the ones were information.
Okay, job performance, okay.
Yeah.
All, yeah.